Bonjour tout le monde. Good morning, everyone. Ottawa est bâti sur un territoire non cédé de la
Ottawa is built on unceded Anishnabi Algonquin territory. The peoples of the Anishnabi Algonquin nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land.
The Anishnabi Algonquin Nation, the city honours all First Nations, Inuit and Métis people, and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. This Friday, February 24th, marks a very significant and tragic anniversary, the one-year anniversary of the invasion of Ukraine by Russian forces. It is a critical and important reminder that while we have been carrying on our normal lives, the Ukrainian people have been facing terror and suffering for an entire year. We are joined by the Ukrainian Ambassador to Canada, Her Excellency Yulia Kovalev, and I'm truly honoured to welcome her here today. Be of new. I'm also pleased to welcome the Ottawa Ukrainian Children's Ensemble and members of the Ukrainian community who are joining us this morning. What a powerful moment it was, I know for all of us who are here, to hear the music, to hear the Ukrainian national anthem, and to see the faces of those young children. Thank you so much for sharing that with us today. We're very grateful. This is a dark moment in history, and Ukrainians continue to endure unimaginable terror and suffering in their home country. C'est un moment sombre de leur histoire que traversent les Ukrainiens qui continuent de subir des horreurs et des souffrances inconcebables dans leur pays. Aujourd'hui, au nom de la population d'Ottawa,
Today, on behalf of the people of Ottawa, City Council will commemorate the first anniversary of the invasion of Ukraine with a minute of silence.
City Council will commemorate the first anniversary of the invasion of Ukraine with a minute of silence. I invite those who can stand to please do so, and I ask that you keep the people of Ukraine in your minds and in your hearts as we reflect on the victims of this brutal and senseless war. Thank you. Merci. The Ukrainian people and armed forces are courageously defending their country in a war where tens of thousands of people have been killed and millions have been displaced from their homes. The ambassador today shared with me some incredible stories of the amazing resilience of the Ukrainian people and the hard work of their elected leaders, members of the community, and the citizens of Ukraine in repairing and restoring the damage that's been caused by Russian missiles. Ukrainian society is defined by a love of freedom and democracy, and we have all been inspired by the honour and bravery of the citizens, the soldiers, and leaders of Ukraine. The people of Ottawa stand with Ukraine and support the Ukrainian people's right to independence, freedom, and self-determination. We stand in solidarity with the people of Ukraine, and we will continue to do what we can to support everyone impacted by the growing humanitarian crisis. The people of Ottawa and people across our country have responded with kindness and generosity to the need for humanitarian support for those affected by this war of aggression. Pour marquer cette horrible tragédie, la conseillère Plante présentera
As we mark this tragic anniversary, councillor Plante will bring forward a motion at council today to condemn this aggression and honour the victims. The city of Ottawa and city council condemn the crimes against humanity and the acts of genocide committed by Russia.
Plante will bring forward a motion today to condemn the aggression and honour the victims. The city of Ottawa and city council condemn the crimes against humanity and acts of genocide committed by Russia. As we all struggle to comprehend the devastation taking place, we strengthen our resolve to support the people of Ukraine. We affirm that we will stand with Ukraine until the internationally recognised sovereign territory of Ukraine is liberated from Russian occupation and peace returns. Ils font enfinir avec cette guerre. Nous voulons que paix et sécurité règne.
We want this war to end, and we want peace and security for Ukraine.
We want peace and security for Ukraine. I'm now honoured to invite Ambassador Kovalev to speak to us this morning. Ambassador Kovalev.
Your worship, dear councillors, ladies and gentlemen, dear friends, Ukrainian community. It's my honour to be today with you in Ottawa, the capital of Canada, one of our closest friends, ally, and partner. As we are facing the 21st of February, that will be one year since Russia brutally invaded into my country, bringing a lot of pain to all of our people, killing a lot of innocent people, but also bringing the world the understanding what is the resilience is, what is the Ukrainian resilience? What are those values that we all took for many years for granted? Peace, security, human rights, and the rule-based order of the world that sometimes we a bit of underestimate? And we today Ukrainians fighting against this brutal aggression, we are paying the highest price for these values, the price of all of our Ukrainians. It's my honour today to be with you in the city council of Ottawa, and I would like to tell you a story how our capital, Kiev, lives this day. It's around 8:30 AM in the morning. Children are already in schools, many people are rushing to their offices, but they hear the alarm, the alarm of Russian missiles that are flying over Ukraine. The children are being moved in a basement underground for the protection. Those people who were walking on the streets to their offices, they are moving to the subway stations that almost for a year were turned to be as the resilient hubs, the places where people can hide and the places where people can stay when Russia is hitting our cities. Unfortunately, some of the missiles hit Kiev. One of them hit the crossroad in the very centre. One of them hit the playground near the biggest university. One of them hit the electricity generation power station in the city. The Siren is still on air, but the emergency services, whether this is firefighters, ambulances, doctors, electricity engineers, they are already going to these places, and they start to put the war on the fire. They start to fix all the infrastructure that have been hit. Because for Kiev and for many other cities in Ukraine, to restore the normal life of Ukrainians as quickly as possible, that is the matter of saving lives of the people, and that is the matter of bringing normality to this not-normal way of life of the country in the wartime. Unfortunately, as the missile hit the big power generation in Kiev, part of the city is without electricity. And what does it mean for the big downtown with a lot of high-storage buildings? It means that many of Ukrainian families have no electricity, have no water, had no heating. And the city council is launching the resilient hubs, where the people can get warm, the people can get food, the people can get access to the internet, because the information for the people in the wartime is most the precious asset to know what is happening with their beloved ones, with their families. Then there is a new sound of many of Ukrainian cities, and this is the sound of thousands and thousands of generators that have been installed everywhere, whether it's the residential buildings, whether it's the small and medium business, whether it's ambulances, hospitals, or simply small cafes, where people can go and get a cup of coffee during this hard time. And now many of Ukrainian cities have this special sound of working thousands of generators as a sound of resilience, that even despite of the war, the people continue to live and the municipalities continue to serve their people during these hard times. We all know now many names of Ukrainian cities, whether it's Bucha, Irpin, or Izum, whether who suffered significantly from Russian occupation, whether it's Lviv or Ivano-Frankivsk, who hosted thousands and millions of internally displaced people, whether it's the city of Mariupol, which is under occupation, but unfortunately the city is almost totally destroyed. The challenges for Ukrainian municipalities are immense, because they are on the ground, and they are the ones who are protecting their cities and their communities from the very first hours of the invasion, and keep on doing this to serve their people. And many of them got their friends from around the world. And being here today, I also would like to introduce Ottawa to make a sister relation with some of Ukrainian cities. That will be both the gesture of friendship, the support, and also a strong signal of solidarity with the cities in Ukraine. And I would also kindly ask you to consider supporting some of Ukrainian municipalities, whether it's the school buses, whether it's ambulances, whether it's fire brigades and the equipments for them, because they are the ones who are addressing these big challenges. And this support is mostly needed now to try to keep the life of the people a bit of easier, if that could be easier during the wartime. And I'm very grateful for you. Grateful for the warm welcoming of many Ukrainians who are fleeing the war and they arrived to Ottawa. We have a big community, and we are proud to have the biggest Ukrainian community outside of Ukraine here in Canada. And we do appreciate the warm welcoming and the support of many Ukrainians who arrived since the start of brutal Russian invasion to Ottawa, and warm welcoming for them. I'd also like to thank you for your gesture of solidarity and flying Ukrainian flag near the city council in Ottawa, and also naming some place in Ottawa, how it should be named. And thank you for that. And it's my big honour to be with you today. And with my closing remarks, I would like to urge you to keep supporting Ukraine. We need to win this fight, because it's much bigger than the fight of Ukrainians for our own country. It's our joint fight for democracy, for the human rights, and just for the dignity of all of us as the people who deserve to live in a peaceful country, in a peaceful and democratic country. Thank you.
Thank you again to the ambassador and to the many representatives of the Ukrainian community who are here with us today. You will continue to have our support. Before we go any further, I wanted to take a moment to to thank councillor Kits for her leadership after the explosion that occurred in her community. I've heard from a number of different people in your community, councillor, who are very grateful for the leadership that you showed. We have many, many different roles as members of council, but ultimately our job is to help and support the people of our communities, and you really rose to the occasion and did that. And I know you'd like to take a moment to say a few words about the response of your community, so please go ahead.
Thanks very much for those very kind words, Mr. Mayor. I know you all join me in sending our strength to those who were injured and those who continue to be displaced. And we're also thinking of the families that were impacted in another difficult emergency last night in Overbrook.
So I wanted to take a moment to thank our emergency services.
To react to a disaster in your ward. But for our emergency services, this is what they do best. This is what they train for, and they are ready to help. And so from the first responders who are on scene, our Ottawa firefighters, paramedics, partners at the Red Cross and the Salvation Army, OC Transpo, building code service providers who worked hard to get as many families as possible back into their homes, and to the ongoing support for displaced families led by Ottawa Fire with support from Ottawa Public Health and the Ottawa Police Service who continues to investigate. I can speak to the bravery, professionalism, compassion, and care that all of our emergency services partners have shown for our residents.
So for all residents of our city, I want to thank you for being there when we need you. Merci de votre merci.
Clerk Kits, and thank you again for your great leadership. All right, I will now ask the deputy clerk to please do the roll call.
Councillor Lula. Councillor Duras. Councillor Hill.
Here.
Councillor Currie.
Here.
Councillor Kelly.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Present.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councillor Johnson.
Here.
Councillor Devine.
Here.
Councillor Bradley.
Yeah.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Councilleur Plante.
You see.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor Trossard.
Here.
Councillor Leeper.
Good morning.
Councillor Brockington. Councillor Menard.
Here.
Councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor Kits.
Here.
Councillor DeRus.
Here.
Councillor Brown. Councillor DeRush.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Councillor Lowe.
Present.
Mayor Sutcliffe.
Here.
Le corps remettait monsieur le maire.
Merci.
You have corps.
Let's move to the confirmation of the minutes from the special meeting of February 1st and the council meeting on February 8th. Are the minutes adopted? Confirmed? Are there any declarations of interest? Okay, councillor DeRush.
Thanks, Mayor. Councillor Steve DeRush declare a potential deemed indirect pecuniary interest on matters related to the motion labelled item 22-22.1. On the agenda for meeting number 80, the Ottawa City Council on Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023. 22-1, the motion moved by councillor Brown, seconded by councillor Kelly regarding the electricity system operator. As the motion relates to electricity system operator giving my spouse as an employee with Hydro Ottawa. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor DeRush. Any other declarations of interest? Okay, moving on to item 7, Association of Municipalities of Ontario Communications. Are these communications received? If item number 8 is the response to an inquiry regarding the emergency intercom button on the Confederation Line train, is that received? We did not receive any regrets, although I note that councillor Brockington is not with us today. Let's move to the motion to introduce reports. Councillor Menard.
Very much, Mayor. That the report from the Police Services Board entitled "Board Activity, Training and Performance 2022 Annual Report", the reports from the city clerk entitled "Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending February 17th, 2023", and "Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act, Explanation Requirements", at the city council meeting of February 8th, 2023, the report from the Audit Committee, Report 1, Build Heritage Committee, Report 2, Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee, Report 1, Financing Corporate Services Committee, Report 1, Light Rail Subcommittee, Report 1, Transit Commission, Report 2, be received and considered.
All right, is that carried?
Carried.
Item number 11, the status update on council inquiries and motions for the period ending February 17th, 2023. Is that report received?
Received.
Item 12, the Ottawa Police Services Board Activity, Training and Performance 2022 Annual Report. Is that report received? Item 13, Audit Committee Report 2022 Ernst &amp; Young Financial Statement Audit Plan. Is that received?
Mayor, can we hold 13.2, please?
Okay. 13.1 or 13.2?
13.2.
Okay. Okay, is 13.1 received then?
Received.
All right, item 13.2, we will hold. Item 13.3 is the Auditor General's report on the Ottawa Police Service and the Ottawa Police Service Board Convoy Response. That council received the following reports. Is that carried? Item 14, 14.1, under Build Heritage Committee designation of former Ecole Saint Pierre, 353 Frill Street, under Part 4 of the Ontario Heritage Act. Is that carried? Item 14.2, application for demolition and new construction of 41 Arlington Avenue, a property designated under Part 5 of the Ontario Heritage Act. Is that carried? Item 15 is the Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee, Report Number 1. Item 15.1 is the motion to ensure the safety and dignity of vulnerable residents during power outages. And this is a committee recommendation. Is that carried? Item 16 is the Financing Corporate Services Committee, Report Number 1. And item 16.1 is an update on the Public Order Emergency Commission. And councillor Gower, I understand you have a motion?
I do. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you councillor Trossard for seconding this. Whereas, as outlined in the report, staff is reviewing the Public Order Emergency Commission's final report and will consider any findings and recommendations of the commission with implications for the city, and will be assessed and considered in the context of the Auditor General's recommendations and management responses. And whereas the Ottawa People's Commission on the convoy occupation was a community-led effort that brought together a diversity of voices to share their experiences on the impact of the convoy. And whereas the OPC has released Part 1 of its final report entitled "What We Heard", with Part 2 of the report anticipated to be released in March 2023, which will offer further analysis and recommendations for action. And whereas the city's archives is already building a historical file on these events and will include these community-generated reports as part of that historical context. And whereas these documents and the diverse perspectives they reflect are also of value to the city of Ottawa and to staff in moving forward with any lessons learned from this period in the city of Ottawa's history. Therefore, be it resolved that the final reports from the Ottawa People's Commission on the convoy occupation be posted publicly alongside the city's response to the Public Order Emergency Commission on the disclosure of executed contracts and reports page on Ottawa.ca.
Thank you councillor Gower. Motion is seconded by councillor Trossard. Councillor Trossard.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I want to thank councillor Gower for putting this motion forward. For those who don't know, the Ottawa People's Commission into the convoy occupation focused exclusively on the experience of residents and spoke to and heard from more than 200 people. So whereas the other inquiries into the convoy took a look at operational services, police response, you know, a broader range of perspectives, this particular report really gets at what day-to-day life was like for residents. So I'm very thankful for this motion. I do think it's really important to get this on the record. And I do recommend that people take a look at that report. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trossard. Is the motion carried? And then the committee recommendation, is that carried as amended? Uh, and then, uh, the, the committee recommendation, is that carried as amended? All right, uh, moving to item seventeen, Light Rail Subcommittee, Report Number One. Seventeen point one is a motion, uh, regarding city manager delegated authority on amendments to the Stage One Light Rail Transit Project Agreement. Is that carried? Item eighteen is Transit Commission Report Number Two. Item eighteen point one is the Transit Commission Terms of Reference. Carried? Moving now to item nineteen, which is the Bulk Consent Agenda. There were no requests, uh, received to lift items from the Bulk Consent Agenda, so is the Bulk Consent Agenda carried? Okay, thank you. Let's, uh, move back to item thirteen point two, which is the Office of the Auditor General's Audit and Investigation Reports. Counselor Menard.
Thanks so much, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to, to key in on one of the, um, recommendations from the report and just get a bit more information from staff around the, um, AMPS, uh, system. So the document states that the AMPS is a municipal alternative to the provincial court system, and it transfers enforcement of parking and bylaw violations from the provincial courtroom to the municipality. Um, AMPS is meant to be a faster and more flexible process for payment, appeal and collection of bylaw violation and parking penalties. And many Ontario municipalities, um, such as Clarence Rockland, Toronto, Markham, Saga, Oshawa and Waterloo have adopted AMPS. And one of the benefits of the system is that it enables bylaw officers to send parking tickets by mail to the vehicle license plate owner's last known address in lieu of physically handing a ticket out in person. The city of Ottawa has not yet, uh, adopted AMPS, as there are other effective mechanisms in place to keep cases out of the provincial courts. However, I know our, our bylaw services have talked about the fact that AMPS would have enabled us to issue more parking tickets in the Ontario Quebec vehicles while minimizing officer safety concerns as tickets from observed violations could be mailed to avoid, uh, confrontation. And so I, I guess the, the question to staff, um, i- is really what, what is the plan, uh, for the city of Ottawa to look at AMPS be, being implemented here? Uh, i- is it a desired function for, for the city and through bylaw services? I know we've had trouble with following up on bylaw complaints in the courts. Often these get thrown out. And so would this allow us, uh, some more flexibility as other municipalities are doing across the province?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can, uh, I can start responding to that. And if anybody wants to add anything, I'd be happy to, uh, allow them to do so. Yeah, as the audit report, we will be considering AMPS. Uh, we will be reviewing it completely. It does require, uh, a lot more administration and a lot more resources to administer. Uh, however, that being said, it's something that, uh, was brought up through the audit as a recommendation, and we are taking it seriously and we will be reviewing it and bringing it back to, uh, committee and council for, uh, approval, depending on, uh, what the recommendations are.
Okay, is that, is that part of the, the bylaw review that it would come, or is that a separate item that'll come to, to committee?
I believe that that would be part of the, uh, a separate item that would come to committee. I don't see it as the bylaw review, um, uh, process as part of the bylaw review.
Okay, review process, sorry. Okay, just to say, I think, I think there's a lot of advantages to this system, uh, for the city. And, uh, as I say, that there's, um, I think a lot of councillors know that, uh, often these bylaw tickets in, when you go to court, all the effort that's been put in can't be followed up upon. And so we should be, where we can, um, looking to a system that, um, doesn't necessarily go to the, the court system where those are thrown out and, and, uh, allow for a system where bylaw officers are safer, uh, being able to use a license plate as we do with other ticket, ticketing systems in, in the city. Uh, so fully in support of that work and hope this does come back for some changes this term. Thank you, Mayor.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, for clarity, um, uh, it is being reviewed by Service Ottawa and, and it will be brought up through, uh, uh, their respective committees with regards to recommendations, not EP, PS.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you, Counselor Menard. All right, is the, uh, recommendation carried then? Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move on to item twenty on the agenda. There are no in-camera items. Item twenty-one, disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority. Uh, is that received? All right, we'll move now to item twenty-two and, uh, the motion from Counselor Brown, which was, uh, deferred from the City Council Meeting of February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Counselor Brown, did you want to speak to that?
Uh, yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just ask, can you hear me okay?
Are you asking if we can hear you okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
The fact that I have to ask you if that's what you're asking is a sign I can't hear you okay.
It would indicate an error.
Yeah, it's not the greatest audio.
Is this a little bit better, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Perfect. Colleagues, I do apologize. I'm, uh, trying to troubleshoot a technical issue. Mr. Mayor, if it's acceptable to you, I'd like to read the "Therefore Be It Resolved" clauses of the motion. There have been a few changes, uh, and that came in consultation with Hydro Ottawa, which was requested uh, by Hydro Ottawa, and Counselor Kelly and I did go away last week, and we had several good and productive meetings with them. So if it's, uh, acceptable to you, Mr. Mayor, I will read the "Therefore Be It."
Go ahead.
Perfect. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor, on behalf of council, write a letter to the president and chief executive officer of the Independent Electricity Systems Operator to formally request confirmation that projects approved through the LT-one RFP and future procurements shall not proceed without a municipal consent resolution from municipal council in the form of an approve motion. And be it further resolved that staff be directed in consultation with Hydro Ottawa to come forward with recommendations in advance of the new zoning bylaw to help inform city council's plans for energy generation, storage and infrastructure as a deliverable project in the two thousand and twenty-three Planning, Real Estate and Economic Development Department Work Plan. And be it further resolved that the appropriate standing committees evaluate current and future requests for municipal support resolutions informed by the recommendations referenced above until amendments have been made to the zoning bylaw, two thousand and eight dash two fifty in Q four of two thousand and twenty-three. Provided, however, that projects proposed by Hydro Ottawa and its affiliates shall be entitled to obtain such municipal support resolutions through bilateral discussions with its sole shareholder, the city of Ottawa. And be it further resolved that until such a time as amendments have been made to zoning bylaw, two thousand and eight dash two fifty in Q four of two thousand and twenty-three, staff be directed to advise any proponent, proponents seeking a municipal resolution through the LT-one RFP. That staff will not bring such requests to council unless, unless such requests are considered through the relevant standing committee. It being understood that the standing committee will act in accordance with the timelines provided in the LT-one RFP. Furthermore, that Hydro Ottawa and its affiliates shall be entitled to obtain any municipal support resolution required per the LT-one RFP or other similar processes via bilateral discussions with its sole shareholder, the city of Ottawa. Be it further resolved that a copy of this motion be sent to the Premier of Ontario, the Ontario Minister of Energy and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. So, Mr. Mayor and council colleagues, I appreciate the collaborative effort, uh, shown by many, certainly through staff and Hydro Ottawa. This motion has been, uh, under the work progress through my office and Counselor Kelly's along with staff since early December. So many positive and fruitful conversations. The intent of this motion is to ensure as Ottawa moves forward with its Energy Evolution Plan and Climate Change Master Plan that we fully account for energy generation infrastructure and the associated infrastructure along with it. We want to ensure that as these projects come forward, there's comprehensive zoning around these projects to ensure that community concerns as well as council concerns are addressed. That's the sole intent of this motion. The updated portions of this motion with Hydro Ottawa reflect the realities of us being the single shareholder of Hydro Ottawa. We're very fortunate to appoint the board of Hydro Ottawa and have two of our council colleagues, Counselor Curry and Counselor Dudas, who sit on the board. And with the engagement through our two council colleagues on this board and with the annual reporting back from Hydro Ottawa, it made sense to ensure that they had a carved-out piece to ensure that those programs and projects that they have coming online aren't hindered, uh, through any additional zoning that may come forward. And that we recognize as those single shareholders, there's inherent value in assisting them move forward. The other positive piece to this motion is asking or rather directing staff to engage with Hydro Ottawa in the development of these updated zoning regulations. They are in-house experts, if you will. And so it just makes sense to ensure that we include them in these discussions as we move forward. And, uh, Mr. Conrad, who I've spoken to several times, has indicated that I am able to express Hydro Ottawa's support for this motion. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if there are any questions from our council colleagues, I look forward to receiving them.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Leeper?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Counselor Brown. Uh, I do want to thank Counselor Brown, uh, for the, uh, good discussions that we've had over the, uh, the past, um, uh, day or so, uh, to help me understand better what this motion is and, and what it is not. Um, I don't have any fundamental concerns with it at this point, but I do want to ask, um, our staff, uh, for their comments on the implications of this motion. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, for the question, Counselor. Certainly, uh, Counselor Brown has outlined the, uh, extensive efforts that, uh, staff have engaged with the councillors since December, uh, including some final changes this morning. So staff are generally supportive of, uh, the wording before you. Um, in terms of the, uh, interactions with Hydro Ottawa and the, the process piece, um, I would defer to, uh, Counselor Brown as to that intent. Certainly in terms of the, uh, engagement on the zoning bylaw, we can and certainly would, uh, engage Hydro Ottawa on that piece that will come forward at the end of the year.
So staff are, are comfortable with passing this motion, um, today, at today's meeting, then?
Yes, s- staff are comfortable, just in terms of the, um, um, the process piece of any Hydro Ottawa applications coming forward. Again, I would defer to Mr. Brown in terms of that, uh, what that direction is.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Leeper. Counselor Curry.
Just wanted to thank Counselor Brown. Uh, as you know, I've had many a comment, I guess, at various committees about how we need to work better with Hydro Ottawa. That's been part of your mandate as well, Mr. Mayor. And I think this will be a first step towards making, uh, the relationship more clear. And not to say that there won't be more conversations to make sure that we're all very clear. But I really want to thank Counselor Brown for all the legwork he did on this to make sure that this was a part of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Curry. Any other questions or comments? Okay, is the motion carried? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Um, motion to adopt reports. Counselor Menard.
Thanks very much, Mayor. That the report from the Police Services Board entitled Board Activity, Training and Performance, two thousand and twenty-two Annual Report. The reports from the city clerk entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The report from the Audit Committee, Report One, Build Heritage Committee, Report Two, Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee, Report One, Finance and Corporate Services Committee, Report One, Light Rail Subcommittee, Report One, Transit Commission Report, Two, be received and adopted as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Menard. Is that carried? All right, now, item twenty-four, motions of which notice has previously been given. We'll start with the motion from Counselor Trossard, seconded by me, um, on, uh, the downtown core. Counselor Trossard.
Thanks so much, uh, Mayor. So as we all know, the workforce has significantly changed in the last three years. Even with a federal mandate for public sector workers to return to work a couple of days a week, uh, nine-to-five, five-day-a-week commuter traffic is not likely to return anytime soon to the downtown core. And that represents a loss on a daily basis of about eighty to a hundred thousand people that, uh, were customers for many of the businesses, particularly in the north part of Centertown. And I believe the most up-to-date statistic is that about thirteen percent of office space in downtown Ottawa is now not being used. Uh, so the obvious question is what can we do with those buildings? And to create great spaces for people, we need more people to live in our downtown core. And I can tell you from talking to residents in that part of the neighborhood, they're dying for a hardware store and for a grocery store and for all sorts of amenities that we want in our day-to-day lives and walking distance. But those businesses are unlikely to succeed without a critical mass of people. So, um, housing conversion's been a hot topic. There have been some really successful conversions and changes to city policy, particularly in Calgary. Uh, we get a lot of, uh, email about this. In my office, there's a huge interest in, um, business-to-residential conversions as a part of downtown revitalization. There are a couple of really interesting projects that are already happening. One of them is on Albert Street, um, by CLV Group called The Slate. I recommend that you go take a tour. They've converted a former office building where I believe Counselor Carr used to work into housing. Um, and Cornerstone Housing for Women, um, it received money from the Rapid Housing Initiative to transform a former office building on Eccles into supportive housing, which is very exciting. So the entire intent between this motion is just to create a working group so we can take a look at what we can do as a city to, to encourage conversions. They're expensive, they're hard, but I do think that it's worth exploring. And I know that the development community has already started coming to us with some suggestions about policy levers that can make this easier. And I'm also really grateful that this motion has some language in about the need for at least twenty percent affordable housing. I think there's a huge opportunity, um, to take a look at what's being done in other parts of the country and around the world and to try and, uh, build more housing, well, convert more housing in the downtown core. The building's already standing there. So, thank you very much, Mayor, for, uh, supporting this motion, and I hope we can all get behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Trossard. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this question is for the mover. I was just wondering how this is similar or different to the other, uh, Downtown Revitalization Task Force being led by the feds, and I'd like to understand how the two will work together.
Sure, so, um, the Downtown Revitalization Task Force is chaired by MP Yasernakvi, but, um, it contains, the mayor is, has now officially become a member, although I don't think you've had a chance to attend yet. Counselor Plant and I both sit on that committee, along with representatives from affordable housing organizations and the housing development community and also business improvement associations. So my understanding is that the federal government is committing to do an inventory of unused buildings in the downtown core and to work with the city to try and figure out how they can be repurposed in a way that works, uh, for the downtown. So this is very much in line with the task force strategy, and this is sort of an exploratory piece to figure out what we can do on the city side. But our federal partners are certainly at the table having conversations about this, so it all comes together. But, um, it's, it's more for us to take a look at what are the city-level policy levers that can help us make this happen.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I just want to make sure we're not, uh, doubling up on efforts and, and, uh, you know, putting staff resources to something that's being executed elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Curry.
Just wondering about a staff comment on the SWAT team. The rest of it is all review, explore, you know, write a letter, whatever. But what about the SWAT team, or what does that actually mean?
Thanks for the question, uh, Mr. Mayor. The, in terms of a SWAT team, um, as, as Counselor, uh, Trossard noted, we have, uh, had one application that's gone through the process, and we have a couple more in the pipe. So we've, we've learned, uh, uh, so, some, uh, issues through that process. So it's really, uh, getting building code development review staff together to, uh, prioritize and, uh, apply any lessons learned on the previous application. So it's not a, it's not an extensive, um, endeavor. It's, it's just, uh, building on the experience we've had on a couple of the, uh, proposals to date.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you, Counselor Curry. Any other questions? Okay, is the mo- oh, Counselor Kavanaugh, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to get an idea in terms financially. Uh, do we make more revenue off of the housing than having office buildings? Is that actually a, um, moneymaker for the city? So I don't know if our staff can answer that.
I'll, uh, I'll speak to the, uh, development charge component and perhaps you're a little may want to weigh in on the assessment, uh, side of things. So certainly what we've seen through a couple of these, um, uh, development charges paid, um, are higher on the commercial side. So there's a, a credit, um, applied to any conversion to residential. So there's no development charge revenue except for the educational, uh, provincially mandated charge. The assessed, uh, assessed value and taxes paid would, would be a function of, uh, you know, the value of the property and. And I defer to Wendy.
Thank you, Dawn. I think the difference here would be we collect a payment in lieu of taxation on these properties currently. The city retains the education portion of that as well as the commercial taxes. So if they were converted to residential, when you look at the tax rate, it's just a little bit lower. But it would depend on what the assessed value is. So really too soon to actually say what the impact would be.
Okay, I thought it would be more with residential than an office. Is that not generally so?
No, the taxation is higher on commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Kavanaugh. Any other questions? Okay, is the motion carried? Thank you. Item 24.2 is the motion from conseiller Plante. Conseiller Plante, did you want to speak to it?
Yes, do you want me to read it or just speak to it?
Well, it's already been introduced, so you don't have to read it again, but.
No, I just wanted to thank everybody who came today to listen to the singing, who introduced yourself to the ambassadors. It really means a lot to the Ukrainian diaspora, myself included, not Ukrainian, my husband is, to see the support from council today.
So if you're here afterwards, there will be a manifestation on Parliament Hill on Friday.
Merci conseiller Plante. The councillor De Bruze?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I was very happy to be seconding the motion of councillor Plante. Usually I don't second lots of motion, but I feel strongly about this motion because a guy who grew up in Lebanon and, like her excellency, shared the experience of what Ukrainian people are feeling today and every day in the last year. I grew up in the war zone and I understand living in shelters, very small access to electricity and water. We're very fortunate to be living here in Canada, that we appreciate it day in and day out. I just want to feel how strongly I feel about seconding the motion. Our prayers and thoughts, not in the last year, but every day, to moving forward with the Ukrainian people. So I know most of councillors here work with our community. We open our community for many refugees. And I commend you for doing this in our community. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing this motion to go through and feeling united with the Ukrainian people. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor De Bruze. Is the motion carried? Thank you, everyone. Item 24.3 is a motion from councillor Troster, seconded by councillor Kavanaugh regarding International Women's Day. Councillor Troster?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm happy to bring this motion forward and support the declaration of International Women's Day for the first time in my new role as council liaison for women, gender equity and 2S LGBTQ affairs. International Women's Day draws on a long history of feminist activism and advocacy, but there's a few issues I wanted to highlight. While Canada recovers from the COVID-19 pandemic, women have still been left behind in a lot of the economic recovery. At the beginning of the pandemic, many more women than men left the labour force and their participation, our participation in the labour force has not recovered. In Ontario, twice as many women as men work in low-wage sectors and generally have a lot more precarity, so lack of job stability. Women who are over fifty-five, they've been effectively forced out of the labour force in greater numbers through a combination of illness, increased caregiving responsibilities, and oftentimes the accumulated stress of working in essential services during the pandemic. Working mothers have seen a significant drop in employment, with employment for single mothers dropping thirty-six percent from pre-pandemic levels. And with economic precarity comes so many other kinds of precarity. The housing crisis impacts a huge range of people, but women and 2S LGBTQ plus people feel the impacts more acutely. This can keep people in unsafe and abusive relationships. It makes home situations precarious. It limits economic power and mobility, and it creates a crunch that is more acutely felt as the housing crisis worsens. So we don't want women to be left behind. I know that this council stands behind the urgent need to create as much affordable housing as possible, services that help level inequality. And I'm very proud to introduce this motion today. And I also look forward to the mayor's breakfast on International Women's Day, and I hope you can all make it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Troster. Councillor Kavanaugh?
Thank you. As the first liaison for women and gender equity, I'm really proud to, that councillor Troster is now taking it on and appreciate all the work. There is so much work to be done. And I wanted to give a shout out to former councillor Deans, who got this started and worked very, very hard on these issues. Unfortunately, we still have a long way to go in our city. And I appreciate the fact that the city is focusing on gender equity and is making it a priority. And I hope to continue to see that. So, but I wanted to make sure that we know that this has been worked on for years and we still have a long way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kavanaugh. Any other questions or comments? Is the motion carried? Thank you. There are no motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. We do have a notice of motion for consideration at a subsequent meeting. Again, councillor Troster?
Thank you, Mayor. International Women's Day is coming up. That's why I'm taking up a lot of airtime, but thank you very much. So this motion is, I just want to speak a little bit of, give it a little bit of context. Some of you may have heard of the inquiry that happened in a community very close to us in Renfrew, Ontario, after Carol Colerton, Anastasia Kuzik and Natalie Warmerden were murdered on the same day by the same former partner. There was an inquest that concluded in June of last year, and it includes recommendations to combat intimate partner violence. So this motion is intended as a response to that inquest and to encourage other municipalities to address the recommendations. So we're really taking the lead from the county of Renfrew. And the request for a motion of this nature came from organisations that address intimate partner violence and violence against women in Ottawa. So I will just read the motion to get it on the record. Whereas Renford County delivered eighty-six recommendations in a unanimous verdict on the deaths of three local women who were killed by their former partner on a single morning in 2015. And whereas these eighty-six recommendations speak to oversight and accountability, system approaches, collaboration and communication, funding, education and training, measures addressing perpetrators of intimate partner violence, intervention and safety. And whereas the number one recommendation put forward is to have the provincial government formally declare intimate partner violence as an epidemic. And whereas Statistics Canada reported that 2021 was the seventh consecutive year of increasing police-reported intimate partner violence. And whereas specific legislation on family and domestic violence has been passed by six provinces and three territories, not including in Ontario. And whereas many of the inquiry's recommendations are either applicable to or could be adopted to the municipal level of government. And whereas the issues of gender-based violence and violence against women are inseparable but not synonymous with intimate partner violence. And whereas Ottawa has formally acknowledged gender-based violence and violence against women as key areas of priority in its community safety and wellbeing plan and its women and gender equity strategies, therefore be it resolved that the following recommendation from the Renfrew County Inquiry be referred to staff for consideration and integration with the city's community safety and wellbeing plan. It was recommendation ten, to encourage that intimate partner violence be integrated into every municipality's community safety and wellbeing plan. And be it further resolved that the city of Ottawa declare intimate partner violence an epidemic. And be it further resolved that the mayor, on behalf of city council, write to the premier and minister of health in support of Lannock County council's motion declaring intimate partner violence an epidemic and in support of the creation of provincial legislation to address family violence and requesting that intimate partner violence be formally declared an epidemic in Ontario. And I would like to thank councillor Kavanaugh for seconding the motion today.
Thank you, councillor Troster. There are no other notices of motion, so we'll move to item 27, motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor Menard?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a notice of motion.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, councillor King. Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you, your worship. Whereas the homelessness crisis is taking a devastating toll on families and communities, undermining a healthy and prosperous Ontario. Whereas the homelessness crisis is the result of the under-investment and poor policy choices of successive provincial governments. Whereas homelessness requires a range of housing, social service and health solutions from government. Whereas homelessness is felt most at the level of local government and the residents that they serve. Whereas municipalities and district social administration boards are doing their part but do not have the resources, capacity or tools to address this complex challenge. And whereas leadership and urgent action is needed from the provincial government on an emergency basis to develop resource and implement a comprehensive plan to prevent, reduce and ultimately end homelessness in Ontario. Therefore be it resolved that city council call on the provincial government to urgently, one, acknowledge that homelessness in Ontario is a social, economic and health crisis. Two, commit to ending homelessness in Ontario. Three, work with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and a broad range of community, health, indigenous and economic partners to develop resource and implement an action plan to achieve this goal. Therefore be it further resolved that a copy of this motion be sent to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Minister of Children, Community and Social Services, the Minister of Health and to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor King. Okay, are there any other notices of motion? Okay. Let's move to item number 27, motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor Menard?
Mayor, that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Is the motion carried? Item 28, confirmation bylaw. Councillor Menard?
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of February 22, 2023.
Is the motion carried? Item 29 is inquiries. Conseilier Plante?
Oui, merci beaucoup, monsieur le maire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
... which has a duty to investigate and address complaints of workplace sexual assault, harassment and discrimination in furtherance and protecting the health and safety of the public and city employees. Recent public commentary in both Canada and abroad demonstrates that a certain organisation's use of non-disclosure agreement, NDAs, seeks to protect organisational reputation, which may negatively impact victims or whistleblowers of workplace sexual assault, harassment and discrimination. To what extent does the city of Ottawa utilise NDAs in the context of such cases? And to what extent does the city practice align with emergent principles, including, for example, the Canadian Bar Association's February 2023 resolution on principles to prevent misuse of non-disclosure agreements in cases of abuse and harassment? Thank you.
Merci conseiller Plante. Are there any other inquiries? All right, motion to adjourn. Councillor Menard?
Okay, that the proceedings of the city council meeting of February 22, 2023 be adjourned.
Carried? Thank you, everyone. Merci beaucoup. Merci beaucoup.
Available for questions from the media we have. Mayor, le maire, Mark Sutcliffe, Wendy Stephenson, interim city manager, directrice municipale par intérim, Natalie Goujon, auditor general, vérifiatrice générale, Kim Ayotte, general manager, emergency and protective services, directeur général des services de protection et d'urgence, and Rene Amelcar, general manager, transit services, directrice générale service de transport en commun. I will now invite each agency in alphabetical order to ask questions. You may ask one question with a follow-up. Pour ordre alphabétique, j'invite maintenant chaque organisation à poser une question et une question de suivi. When asking your questions, please identify who your question is directed to. And if you are in council chambers, please use the microphone. Lorsque vous posez votre, vos questions, vous pouvez indiquer à qui s'adresse votre question. Et si vous êtes dans la salle du conseil, vous pouvez le faire au micro. We'll now start with Cindy Tran at the Canadian Press.
Always Cindy, verse. Maybe we'll randomize this, uh...
Honestly, it would help me a little bit. Um, but my questions are going to be in regards to the Public Order Emergency Commission, and the first one is to you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, one of the recommendations was, uh, contemplating expanding the role for the parliamentary protective services to include Wellington Street. And I wanted to maybe hear your thoughts on, oh, maybe what specific actions the city is taking? And do you agree with, um, that recommendation about the PPS?
I've spoken with the Ottawa Police Service, uh, and with Chief Eric Stubbs about this. And the reality is that even if the parliamentary precinct is expanded, the Ottawa Police Service will still have a role to play in, uh, in that area. Because if there are, for example, break-ins or there are other events, there's still the, the police service that would have to respond to those. Uh, so it doesn't really change the workload for the Ottawa Police Service. And if there are demonstrations in downtown Ottawa, quite often, as we've seen in recent weeks, uh, they will start on Wellington or on Parliament Hill, and then they'll move to another part of the city or vice versa. So the same level of coordination and, and work has to be done. So the first point that I'll make is it, it doesn't change a whole lot if you move the line between the parliamentary precinct and, and the jurisdiction of the City of Ottawa. Um, it doesn't change a whole lot if you move the line. Uh, but we're open to having those conversations with the federal government and, and, um, and there's, there's a lot to discuss there in terms of the future of Wellington Street. And so those, those conversations are continuing, and we're open to whatever will provide the most safety and security for the people of Ottawa.
Excellent. And, um, going back to, I guess, the first part of my question as well was, are there any specific actions that the city will be taking in light of the report that has come out? I know it just came out on Friday, and it's humongous.
We're going through the report, and, and staff are, are looking at, uh, every recommendation and, and, um, and they'll be coming back with their thoughts and, and we'll make decisions on how we'll, we'll move those recommendations forward. But, um, there hasn't, you know, there, we, we don't have anything new to report since Friday, except that the process is underway.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Plenelle Hujman Kynello at CBC Ottawa.
Hello, hi, Mayor. I'm gonna give you a light one today, and I would like this noted for today, because that, uh, I was gonna ask you about your hundredth day anniversary today, first hundred days, uh, in office. And I know you had a long list of things that you wanted to check off, and I was looking at it. Lots of things you're checking off, maybe not, uh, some others. Uh, maybe if you can discuss what your first hundred days has been like, the things you've achieved, the things maybe that's gonna take a little longer.
On a point of order, I think technically a hundred days is tomorrow. So...
That's correct. I apologize.
February twenty-third, so, um...
Today, so...
Yeah, so, um, we're, we're still, you know, it's day ninety-nine, um...
There's a lot of time still.
Still lots of time to get things done. Um, I'm very happy with how the first hundred days has gone. First and foremost, I'm really pleased, uh, with the level of collaboration that's been happening with, uh, with city council. Um, and, and I think that's, that's something that was expected of us. I heard a lot about it during the election campaign, that people felt there was some dysfunction during the last couple of years at city council. And I made it a priority to engage with all the city councillors, and I'm grateful for their collaboration and cooperation and the efforts at consensus building over the last three months. Uh, so I'm very pleased about that. Um, I think if you look at the list of commitments that we made, uh, during the campaign for the first hundred days, um, we're doing pretty well on that list. Most of the, most of the, uh, issues or, uh, or most of the objectives are, are either, have been achieved or they're underway. The process is underway to achieving them. A lot of them obviously are tied to the budget, which we look forward to debating next Wednesday. Um, but I'm pleased with, with how it's gone in the first hundred days. It's been busy, and there have been quite a few surprises. And, and, you know, we've been spending time responding to inquiries and, and reports and other events. But in spite of that, I think we've gotten a lot done in the first, uh, in the first hundred days.
It's not my follow-up, but what is like, what's been the most surprising thing to you in your first few months here?
The most surprising thing is the number of times I get asked, what's the most surprising thing that's, uh, that's happened? Honestly, everybody, everybody asks me that question. What's the most surprising thing? Um, there have not been a lot of surprises. I've, I've been following city council for, for thirty years, and, and so, um, so I know, um, I know, you know, I knew what I was getting into. Um, uh, I, you know, like in any new job, when you set out to do a lot, uh, you're always amazed at how quickly the first couple of months go by. Um, so I think that's normal. Um, what I'm really grateful for, uh, is, you know, there's a, there's a fantastic team of people at the City of Ottawa, the senior leadership team. And the organization is really a remarkable group of highly experienced, highly qualified experts and, and people with a long track record of community service. And so I'm really pleased to be able to work with the senior leadership team and the, and the people at the City of Ottawa to move, um, these issues forward and, and respond to things. So I'm, I guess I'm, I'm not surprised by that, but I'm really gratified and encouraged by it.
Thanks very much, Mayor. Uh, and my second question is for, um, Ms. Goujon. Uh, and I'm not sure how much you've had a chance to read the POEC report, but you have said in the past that you're not going to look at the police operations part of what happened during the convoy protest. Uh, put that on, you put that part on hold, waiting for that report, but that you would perhaps go back to audit and, and look at, um... Look at police operations if you thought that was necessary. And I'm just wondering if you've had a chance to, uh, think about that yet?
Thank you for your question, Joanne. Um, obviously, I can't say I know all two thousand pages intimately. Um, that being said, I'm very comfortable with the scope that we did take. Uh, I would say our three audits seem to complement very well the Public Order Emergency Commission report. Uh, the areas that we didn't touch upon when it comes to the police service that I was hoping would be answered, I believe have been. They did dive into the planning and preparation of the Ottawa Police Services. They dove into intelligence gathering, usage and sharing. And I think those pieces were very, very key. And there seems to be some very fulsome recommendations in that area. So, um, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nous allons maintenant passer à Charles-Antoine Gagnon au droit.
It's your hundredth day tomorrow. What are the biggest challenges you were faced with? And what will the next ones be? You've been here for three months. So what are the biggest challenges you see ahead? We're talking about homelessness in the future, you mean? In the first three months? And, and what's coming up? Well, naturally, homelessness is a major challenge. And it's very important that we face this challenge. I hope we can build affordable housing in the coming years, but it's very complicated. we'll need the support of the federal and the provincial governments. And of course, there are challenges with our light rail system. But I'm very confident in the OC Trans, OC Transport team. And it's a stab, it's very important to re-establish the confidence in the system, the light rail system. We have budgetary challenges too for twenty-twenty-four. But I hope that in the coming months we'll have, we'll find solutions for the budget in the next three years. You supported Mrs. Traster's motion on the, um, changing old federal buildings in, uh, in housing, their conversion. Can you see other, uh, office buildings that could be converted? Well, if there's less people living, no, sorry. If less people are working downtown, maybe more people can live here. So we'll need to review all options, all opportunities to, to develop, uh, housing, including affordable housing in a downtown area. And if there are any opportunity to convert commercial buildings into housing, affordable housing, we'll, we're gonna have to review all this. It's not easy, because s- some buildings were not built for housing. So it's complicated, but I hope we can find solutions. And that we can build more housing and affordable housing. Thank you.
Hi, Taylor.
So we have unfortunately just seen another homicide in the Byward Market, Lower Town area. Can you speak to, as mayor, what you believe is needed, worth trying to really address the multifaceted challenges that exist in that area?
It is a multifaceted challenge, and, and I think we're seeing evidence of some of the, uh, some of the struggles that that area is going through. And, and that's why during the election campaign, I spoke about the need for more resources in the Byward Market, not just police resources, but community resources as well. And we're continuing to have the conversation with the Ottawa Police Service and with other community organizations and with, with the Community and Social Services Department about what some of those solutions will be. We've included a number of measures in the draft budget that will support the agencies that help the most vulnerable in that area. So I think it's a combination of things. Um, obviously, we have to support the most vulnerable. Um, we have to, uh, look after disadvantaged youth in our community and, and provide them with support. And we also have to have the resources to, uh, to protect the Et nous devons aussi avoir les ressources pour protéger le marché de Baywood et répondre à l'activité criminelle. Donc, c'est une combinaison de tous ces choses, et je pense que celles-là seront toutes parties de notre plan à venir. Vous savez, il n'est jamais suffisant, et il y a beaucoup à faire, et c'est difficile. Mais je pense que nous pouvons commencer à faire des progressions.
C'est une situation très perturbante. Nous comprenons qu'il y a beaucoup de défis dans le marché de Baywood. Pendant ma campagne l'an dernier, j'ai parlé de cela. Nous travaillons avec la ville de parlement et les services policiers d'Autriche pour trouver des solutions pour la population vulnérable et pour être en mesure de traiter les activités criminelles dans le marché de Baywood. Ce n'est pas une situation simple, mais c'est très important de faire un marché de Baywood plus sûr.
Juste avant la campagne, comme on l'a mentionné plus tôt, vous avez publié une liste de priorités pour les premiers 100 jours. Et deux de ces items étaient : initier des plans pour un centre d'opérations de quartier dans le marché de Baywood, et examiner le mandat et les opérations de la société services de la ville qui gère le marché de Baywood, et commencer le processus de rendre le marché de Baywood un jouet de la ville qui est sûr, propre et accueillant. Pouvez-vous parler de ce que, si quelque chose, vous avez fait sur ces deux priorités? Et vous savez, si vous n'avez pas accompli le progrès que vous aviez intérêt à avoir, pourquoi pas?
En termes simples, les conversations ont commencé. Ce sont des objectifs à long terme, et mon but dans les premiers 100 jours était de commencer le processus. Et je pense que nous l'avons fait. Et nous avons des conversations qui conduiront à des résultats que nous avons besoin sur ces deux problèmes. Donc, j'ai eu quelques conversations avec le chef de police et avec d'autres sur ce que ça va prendre pour établir un centre d'opérations dans le marché de Baywood et ce qui serait inclus dans ça. J'ai parlé avec le département des services sociaux communautaires à ce sujet aussi. Et il y a d'autres conversations qui sont en cours à propos de certaines des autres parties de la solution. Donc, je ne pense pas que quelqu'un attendait, et certainement que je n'étais pas en train d'être engagé à faire tout ça dans les premiers 100 jours, mais à commencer le processus. Et c'est ce que nous avons travaillé sur.
Et qu'en est-il de ce mandat de review de la société qui gère le marché de Baywood? Avez-vous commencé à travailler sur celui-ci?
Nous avons commencé à parler du futur du marché de Baywood à un niveau large. Et il y a, vous savez, il y a beaucoup de gens, il y a beaucoup de participants dans cette discussion. Donc, nous continuons à avoir ces conversations. C'est vraiment important que nous obtenions le marché de Baywood à nouveau ce qu'il était avant. Nous avons l'anniversaire du 200e du marché de Baywood qui approche dans quelques années. Et je pense que j'ai parlé avec beaucoup d'propriétaires de business et de nombreux résidents du marché de Baywood et des gens qui visitent le marché de Baywood à une base régulière et des gens qui ont cessé de visiter le marché de Baywood à une base régulière. Et je pense que tout le monde veut la même chose, qui est de restaurer le marché de Baywood à un endroit sûr et attractif à visiter. Il y a toujours beaucoup de gens visitant, beaucoup d'activités là-bas, mais je pense que nous savons que ça peut être encore mieux. Et donc, nous avons commencé le travail sur ça. Nous avons commencé les discussions et les consultations. Et il y a beaucoup de choses qui doivent être faites dans les jours à venir.
Merci.
Merci Taylor.
Nous allons maintenant à Frédéric Pepin de Radio Canada.
Frédéric Pepin, Radio Canada. Vous avez eu un bon discours sur l'Ukraine ce matin. Quand vous parlez de soutenir l'Ukraine, est-ce qu'elle est seulement un symbole? Est-ce qu'il y a un token seulement? Est-ce que la ville d'Autriche soutient financièrement la communauté ukrainienne? Pouvons-nous faire plus pour aider l'Ukraine, de l'Autriche? Réponse: j'espère que nous pouvons faire plus. J'ai parlé à l'ambassadeur, donc j'ai parlé à l'ambassadeur sur certains de nos objectifs, sur certains des solutions proposées. Quel type de soutien que nous pouvons fournir comme municipalité? C'est très difficile de comprendre la situation sur le terrain de l'Ukraine. J'espère que nous pouvons faire plus, mais au moins. Parler à l'ambassadeur a été une bonne conversation. Nous avons reçu 3000 Ukrainiens ici à Autriche. Ils ont été déplacés par la guerre. Nous aidons ces 3000 Ukrainiens. Donc, c'est un travail très important. L'ambassadeur est très heureux du soutien que nous avons fourni. J'espère que nous pouvons faire plus. Donc, nous essayons de trouver d'autres options, d'autres façons de soutenir mieux l'Ukraine.
Je veux dire, c'est, je serai honnête, c'était difficile de passer à l'affaire du conseil ordinaire pour notre communauté incroyablement sûre et prospère, à faire face à des éléments de la journée de l'année aujourd'hui sur l'agenda du conseil municipal. Pas que ce ne soient pas encore des éléments importants, mais ils sont en comparaison avec ce qui se passe à Kiev et dans le reste de l'Ukraine. Donc, c'était difficile de voir le contraste entre ce que les gens de l'Ukraine ont l'expérience et la sécurité et la confortance de la vie à Autriche. Donc, j'espère que nous pouvons faire plus pour les gens de l'Ukraine. Et j'ai eu une grande conversation avec l'ambassadeur avant notre arrivée à la réunion du conseil sur quelques choses que nous pourrions faire. Elle était très reconnaissante pour le fait qu'il y ait, selon elle, environ 3000 Ukrainiens qui sont actuellement à Autriche, qui ont échappé à la guerre. Et nous voulons continuer à fournir autant de soutien pour ces gens et pour tout le monde qui vient à Autriche. Mais j'espère que nous pouvons faire plus, et plus que des mesures symboliques. Mais j'espère que nous pouvons faire plus pour soutenir les gens de l'Ukraine parce que cet anniversaire vendredi est un rappel perturbant de combien ils ont souffert. Nous devons regarder, vous savez, la conversation s'est déroulée juste avant la réunion du conseil. Et donc, nous verrons ce qui est possible et continuerons la conversation.
Madame Amilcar, j'ai une question pour vous. J'ai vu que dans certains des bus et des stations de train, vous avez des posters. Vous invitez les gens à partager leurs passes de bus ou de train. Pouvez-vous expliquer parce que pendant la réunion de la commission, vous voulez examiner les méthodes de paiement des travailleurs ici et pour s'assurer qu'ils optimisent le usage de leur passe de bus? Pouvez-vous expliquer cette campagne? Que feriez-vous pour attirer les passagers dans le système? Merci pour la question. Ce n'est pas une nouvelle idée, ça a été utilisé avant quand vous avez travaillé télé. Donc, disons que si vous avez sous le même verrou, vous pouvez partager votre passe de bus. Donc, disons que l'un des partenaires travaille dur le matin, l'autre peut utiliser sa passe de bus à la nuit. Avec le team, nous essayons de trouver d'autres solutions pour améliorer la loyauté des travailleurs, même s'ils viennent seulement quelques jours par semaine dans la ville. Donc, nous aurons de nouvelles initiatives. Merci beaucoup.
Ceci conclut le point de presse d'aujourd'hui. Merci.